We'll call the meeting to order and ask for a roll call.
Belsley.
Here.
Blounier.
Here.
Herr.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Newman.
Here.
Parrott.
Here.
Ask you to join us in a pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no public hearings tonight. We do have some presentations and special reports. And we'll start first with the Morton School District. If you'd state your names. Okay, yep, absolutely.
Jeff Hill, Superintendent, Morton School District 709, and we're going to talk to you a bit about the county facility sales tax this evening. You've got a handout that's coming around on one side, frequently asked questions about the county facility sales tax, and then also on the reverse side, you'll have a chart, and Dr. Beatty will be talking about the chart, and that talks about the tax relief that Morton School District will be providing if the sales tax is passed. What I'm going to do is give a brief overview of our current facility situation, so everyone's aware of where we are, what our next steps happen to be, and then Dr. Beatty will talk about the Board's position on the sales tax. We've just approved a two-phase project at our junior high school that came after, as you are all well aware, some elementary school additions that were completed in 2017. And upon doing an enrollment study in the fall, we've made the determination that over the next 15 years, our current facilities are going to serve us well, but they need some work. And they need some work in terms of repair and maintenance, as we have done all along, but then also in renovation and helping our space become relevant. So that information wasn't as readily available in the fall as we were going through the county facility sales tax for the first time, simply because we didn't have the enrollment study completed. And once we had everything completed and done, we took a step back and really decided to make that our mission moving forward, is making our current facilities as relevant as we possibly can. So there's a two-phase project at the junior high school, and then we've identified several things at the high school that we could do down the road to make our facilities more relevant for our students, more comfortable for our visitors, and we think that is really going to help Morton School District down the road. Obviously, the issue with that kind of work, somewhere between $25 and $30 million worth, is funding and revenue for those things. And whenever we've had big facility projects in the past, over the last several years, we've had to do one of two things, either go to a bond issue, or take money from other funds that are part of our school system. And we know that from a school district perspective, we're looking at some unknown issues down the road, pension cost shift being one of them. We do know that there was a mandatory minimum wage that's going to be phased in over time that we'll be having to deal with from a financial standpoint. And there's other legislation that is, that could be eating into revenue down the road. So with all that in mind, the Board took a look at putting the county facility sales tax on the ballot again this spring. And it's safe to say, if it wasn't unanimous, it was probably almost unanimous. All the school districts in the area felt compelled to vote it back on the ballot. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Beatty and talk a little bit about school board perspective.
Thank you. Chad Beatty, Morton School Board. The Board, if this is approved at the county level, so it's got to be a county-wide approval for this county facility sales tax, the Board discussed at length what we would do with these funds, and if we were comfortable even putting this back on the ballot. The only way the Board was comfortable putting this back on the ballot is if we offset this tax in some shape or form. It's a new tax. It's got a potential of bringing in about $2.1 million in revenue per year on this county's facility sales tax. And the Board was comfortable, if this is approved, withholding our CPI for one year, which would give us a property tax freeze. And that freeze is not just for a single year. That is, of course, forever more, because that money, once it is frozen for a single year, can't be garnered further down the road. And so we'll be looking at approximately $700,000 property tax freeze for all of our property owners here in Morton. The other thing we are planning to do, if this is approved, is to pay off our 2016 loans, our bonds, that we use for the additions on the elementaries. And if you look on the backside of the page that we sent out there, it just gives an estimate on what our property owners could foresee seeing. If you take a $200,000 home, if you look on that right-hand box there, the estimated savings over a 10-year period would be approximately $1,160 for that homeowner. The first four years, there's approximately a $200 savings for an owner of a $200,000 home. And that comes from $145 from the offset of the bonds, the abatement, and then approximately $58 per year in property tax savings. After the first four years, those bonds from those elementary additions will be gone, and so the savings drops to approximately $60 per year moving forward. If you think of that $1160 savings on that $200,000 home over 10 years, that property owner would have to spend approximately $116,000 in taxable items from a county facility sales tax over that 10-year period. So approximately $11,600 per year. If that property owner does not spend over $11,600 on taxable items, they will come out with a net decrease in their property, in their taxable items. And if you look at that sheet, it also describes the taxable items. It does not include groceries. It doesn't include large purchases like cars, farm equipment, et cetera. So the potential for a cost savings is significant for our homeowners. I would gladly field any questions. We appreciate you letting us speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is the Oaklawn Estates Homeowners Association.
Good evening, gentlemen and lady. My name is Sharon Stout. I live in Oaklawn Estates. And we, last month, formed a homeowners association and elected officers. I am the president of the Board. With us here tonight, sorry, my voice is...with us here tonight is Danny Gillette, our vice president, Rhonda McCarty, our secretary. Our treasurer was not able to attend tonight. And we have several of our Board members. Let's see. Sarah Wilkinson, Judy Rosenberg, Bob Hasty, Steve Schultz, Ron Mann. I think I got everybody. Oh, sorry. Don Wesley. I'd like to express our thanks for this opportunity to make all of you aware of a very negative situation we're dealing with in Oaklawn. Back in February of last year, RV Horizons bought and took over the management of Oaklawn Estates. First thing they did was present us with a 40-page lease and a lot rent increase, and both of which were illegal. And we, 20 of us homeowners, got together, and we hired an attorney to represent us in this matter. And the lease and the lot rent were both taken away as a result of that. Okay, as the year went on, we got notice in the spring of water meters that were going to be placed on our homes, despite our objections to these meters and refusal to allow them to be placed on our property. When I first heard about this, we first got notice, I did a lot of research on the web about these smart meters. And what I discovered was that they are a health hazard for people who have implanted pacemakers, distributors, and people who have heart rhythm issues. It's been scientifically proven that these devices can interrupt pacemakers and distributor, defibrillators, excuse me, and also cause heart rhythm issues for people that have that problem. So I scheduled an appointment with the community manager to discuss this with her. I told her my husband had a pacemaker, as well as several other people in Oaklawn, and that we did not want the meter placed on our home. Outside in the yard was fine, but not on our home. And she absolutely refused. They went ahead with installation of these meters. I would guess 90% of the meters that were installed were without our knowledge and our permission. The crew even waited until most of us were gone away from our home, and then went under our home and installed these meters. And at the time they did that, they also caused a lot of damage to our homes. Many people had damage to their water pipes. They had damage to their insulation. Heat tapes were not placed back on the pipes. So consequently, over this awful freeze that we had in February, many people's water pipes froze up, and they were without water from three to seven days before they could get restoration of water. And this was due to dangling heat tapes, heat tapes not turned on. Following the installation of the water meters last year, construction started in Oaklawn. All of the utilities are underground for most of Oaklawn, and they run between the rows of mobiles. They brought in a bunch of new homes, and they were putting new homes on empty lots. And Amarin, the underground private line that goes from Amarin's electrical box to the homes, were out of code. And Amarin required those to be replaced before they would turn on electricity to those homes. So there is a group of five other homes. The homes are grouped in banks of six. And so Oaklawn management decided that those of us around a new home, where the new line was going in, ours would be replaced as well. We were told at the time that Amarin, this was something Amarin required, that they were on the job supervising every day, and that it was a crew that they hired to do the work. Follow-up with Amarin by a number of our residents proved that that was not true. The crew that is actually doing the work is out of Colorado. They have one electrician supervising, basically workers, I would guess. They're not electricians. They may be apprentices. While the electrician has the knowledge, there's a lot of what they did, there's a lot of carelessness. So consequently, there's damage to people's homes. There's damage to the infrastructure behind our homes. Power lines were cut. Water lines were cut. Telephone lines were cut. Cable lines were cut. People were without water and power for sometimes four days at a time due to this negligence. They did not advise us of when this work was going to be done, when they were going to be behind our homes. In conjunction with this, these private lines that go to our homes are underground, so therefore our skirting had to be taken off in order for them to replace the line. In the course of them doing this, a lot of skirting got damaged. Tracks got damaged. Equipment under the home got damaged. So in discussions, people requesting and reporting these damages to the office, they were advised that it wasn't something that was their responsibility. We were going to have to stand the cost of all repairs. In conjunction with this electrical line being replaced, they seemed to need to come inside our homes, access our electrical panels, and what they call "update our panel," which, as I understand it, is this line going up through the walls in our home into our electrical box. Homes that they have already done that to have sustained damage. There's people that their furnaces were affected. They had to have their furnaces repaired because they wouldn't work after the work was done. Notices were given out prior to them coming into people's homes, that if we were not at home, did not allow them to come into our home, we would be fined $500. This was also reported to Amarin, which Amarin advised that did not come from them. It is not something they would do, and that it came strictly from the management office. What we're dealing with here is not a simple tenant landlord dispute. They are violating our rights, our civil rights. They are harassing the elderly. There are threats of eviction and notices of eviction served for those who refused to sign a new lease that was presented to us in December. This lease was 48 pages long. And in this lease, we were giving up all of our civil rights. We were giving them permission to enter our home anytime they want to. We were relieving them of any liability for any damage they did to our homes or our vehicles parked on the street. We were relieving them of any injuries due to damages in the street, potholes that they didn't fix. We were giving up our right to a trial by jury if we disputed them, amongst many, many other things. We have had an attorney for Prairie State Legal Services review this lease, and he has advised that it's very, very problematic. Much of it is illegal. Unfortunately, they have to handle things on a case-by-case basis. So not everyone, we are a large community, not everyone will have their services available. During the threats of eviction and notices served to the elderly for refusal to sign a new lease, they are also being threatened with fines. $500 fine if they do not sign the lease. $50 a day for not signing the lease. That's part of it. I think the worst-case scenario that I heard, that a lady in our senior section talked to me scared to death because they had threatened her with taking possession of her home and kicking her and her disabled husband out of their home. The management is also refusing to maintain the park, as required by laws that we have found out. Excuse me, I forgot to put my glasses on. They are not clearing the streets. Would you go ahead and pass out the pictures? My husband is going to pass some pictures out for you to review. Unfortunately, I ran out of ink, and so I was only able to make two copies. These are some of the things that you'll see that is going on in the park. They're not clearing the streets, the public areas, or the unoccupied lots of leaves. They're telling us that because they do not have the equipment. When we had the major snow last month, they advised us they were not plowing this snow except for a swath down the middle. And we were expected to clear from our drive out to the middle of the street. They got a number of complaints about that, and they did about a week later send in someone else. They hired a service that did clear the streets curb to curb, but they piled mountains of snow in the streets, snow and ice between the mobiles, which are just finally starting to melt all away. You'll see in some of the pictures there that the storm drain system is completely blocked by packed mud, leaves, and debris. The water does not drain. It floods the intersections in our streets. Water sometimes stands there for days. And people that live on the corners near one of those storm drains, the water has even backed up into their yards over the curb. They, last month, sent us notice with a newsletter that they're going to start billing us for water sewer. Now, there's several of us where our leases, stayed in our leases, that water and sewer is provided. Several people do not have that connotation in there. So I did some research. I spoke with the Illinois Department of Public Health, Dick Lindsey, who, he's at the district office here in Peoria. And he advised me that they cannot bill us for the water because they haven't been approved to install meters. They did install meters last year. I failed to mention those meters were not up to code. They were not the appropriate meters, and the IDPH required them to be removed and appropriate meters installed in their place. So what, we do not know the status of that situation right now. They also had to get approval to be a community distributor in order to resell Morton's water and bill us for that. Mr. Lindsey did advise me that they have got that certification. Whether or not they have a person on staff to manage the water distribution and test the water, we do not know. As I understand it, that's another requirement. The new homes, back last spring, they bought about 90 new homes into the park. They did not have lots prepared to put them on, so they started parking them in our streets. Some of the pictures there, you will see on White Oak, which is one of the main north-south streets through Oaklawn, the middle of it is totally blocked by two rows of mobile homes. At one point, there were homes back-to-back all around the center of Oaklawn there, where there is like a park-like area that's not developed. That posed great hazard for us. Several of us had numerous times where we almost had accidents there because you had no vision of who was coming around the square towards you. Some of those, they have now got lots set up for some of those to be moved on the lots. But there are still quite a few of them, still on the streets, still in the older north section of the park, where streets back there are totally blocked. They cannot be used. They put some of the new homes on empty lots and just set them there. Left them. They did not set them up. And so some of them were tilted at odd angles. Siding was starting to fall off. Windows were crooked. The lots that are left, that are unoccupied, have no structures on them, are too small for any of these mobiles. So I don't know their intention on what to do with the rest of them. They have put for sale signs and for lease signs in all of them. So it appears as though they're selling them off the street. The new homes that they have put on lots, they're forcing them on lots that are not big enough to hold them. So they're breaking the health department codes and/or laws for space on the lots. The front of them, front of most of them, are right at the sidewalk or slightly over the sidewalk. The backs of them are right on top of the homes on the backside that were already in place. There is not much room. The side yards, they're taking half the yards from a lot of people's homes to put these on. These lots are mostly designed for homes that are 14 wide by 70 long. And these new mobiles they're putting in are 16 wide by 80 feet long. There's also restrictions and codes by the health department on the size of the lots and where the homes are to be placed, and those codes are being ignored. Over the course of the summer and the fall last year, Morton Utilities upgraded our gas system there. They put in whole new gas lines and connections and new meters. And the old system between the homes was taken off service. At the time they did that, there's a number of homes on the side street that still had gas lights. The gas lights were disconnected. They had to be reconnected to the new system, and management refused to have that done. So therefore, we have safety issues because the side streets from the corners, I live on a corner, where there's an electrical light, from there west is pitch black. There is no lighting at all. And there is a code, Mr. Lindsey provided me, that states that each yard is to have the equivalent of a 100-watt light bulb illuminating the yard in a mobile home park. That's obviously violated and not being corrected. We have done a number of residents. We have spent a lot of time contacting state, county, and village agencies. Some of you here have talked to some of our residents about issues we're dealing with. One thing that did occur by several of us talking to the IDPH at state level and the local office in Peoria, was that work was stopped on the, for the plumbers on the installation of the meters and for the electrical underground wiring. Because what had happened, RV Horizons had not submitted plans to the state or gotten licensing to do these construction projects. That work stoppage is still going on. We have not been advised yet of the status or when construction will continue. We are having a decline in residents. There are 551 lots in Oaklawn. Only 410 are occupied. Since RV Horizons has taken over, people have abandoned their homes, walked into the office, gave them the keys, and walked away and left them. And there's a couple of, well, there is one picture of a home on Poplar across the street and about three houses down from us where that happened. And there is trash and debris, beer cans everywhere. Management is not cleaning this up. Their maintenance crew has been over there several Their maintenance crew has been over there several times, and nothing has been done to correct that problem. Two homes last, over the last couple of weeks, or right at the end of last month, water pipes burst, one on Poplar, one on Redwood. They ran, water poured out from under them for four and five days, and it took residents calling the state, IDPH, and local Morton Utilities to get this issue handled. There are many people there planning right now to move out and/or abandon their homes, especially since other communities are offering free removal of mobile homes from Oaklawn to their community. In one year's time, our beautiful peaceful community has become a slum. For years, my husband and I have lived there for 33 years. For years, in the spring and summer, we had lots of people coming through on Saturdays and Sundays looking at homes. We live on a corner, so when we were out, people would stop and ask us questions about the community and living there. And that has been nonexistent since they took over. Not only do we not see people coming through looking at homes, we are hearing bad things about Oaklawn out in the public. My husband was recently at Casey's picking up a pizza, talking to one of the workers there about where we lived in Oaklawn, and a lady heard him mention Oaklawn. She walked up to him and she said, "I was interested in buying a mobile home in Oaklawn, but I drove through there, and I don't want to live there because it's so trashy." Everywhere we're turning for help, we're getting doors shut in our face. IDPH, they enforce the code as best they can. They're shorthanded. They only come in once a year. Morton Utilities, they're, we're constantly being told it's private property. Sorry, there's nothing we can do for you. The state level of IDPH, they, the same thing, they don't get involved. It seems that we have to hire an attorney to help us, which a lot of people cannot afford, or we have to go to the Attorney General for help. And it seems to us that there is surely some agency, some entity somewhere that can help us, that can enforce the laws that are on the books to protect us and protect our homes. We're concerned not only for the demise of the community where we live, but for Oaklawn becoming a blight on the city of Morton when it has never been before. We were all proud to say we lived there. We need help, folks. We don't know where to go next. Thank you so much for your time. Any questions?
I have received some emails. I passed them on to Craig. Craig has talked to several of the owners and our legal counsel, and I'll ask Pat to address some of their concerns.
I just have a brief statement. I'd ordinarily reserve this for my report, but it's my understanding that some of the residents intend to leave after this presentation is concluded, and so this is a statement on the village's behalf and not a question and answer session. But the village, Morton, is aware of resident concerns and complaints regarding problems at Oaklawn Mobile Home Park. While the village is sympathetic to the concerns of residents, the village has limited regulatory authority over what are either private, civil, legal disputes between residents and the owners of the park or issues of state regulation. To aid residents, the village has interceded with regulators and state agencies and with the park owner. To further aid residents in understanding which agencies and public bodies regulate certain elements of mobile home parks in the village of Morton, an informational bulletin has been prepared by the village and some copies disseminated tonight. The village intends to mail copies of the informational bulletin to every resident at Oaklawn. Copies can also be obtained at Village Hall. The village would encourage residents at Oaklawn to register complaints, which cannot be resolved with park management with the appropriate regulatory authority, which is off in the Illinois Department of Public Health.
I wish there was more we could do.
I would like to address a safety concern. And this I can address to Mr. Kelly. I've watched the ambulances come into Oaklawn because we have a lot of senior citizens, and they're in there at least once a week. And I watched them come in a couple of times off of Jefferson onto White Oak. They get up to the park, they have to come around the park to get back to where they've got to go on White Oak. It's because those homes are sitting there blocking their path. Somebody's going to get hurt. There's going to be a fire, and the trucks and the emergency personnel are not going to have access to get to them.
My name is Glenn Magnuson. I've been a resident since March of 2017.
Excuse me, sir. Before you go any further, if you'd come up to our microphone, our meeting's recorded, and it helps create a record. Thank you.
My name is Glenn Magnuson. I've been a resident since March of 2017. Something you might be interested in that you might want to do something about. And I've got this from the maintenance man who had over 10 years in this place and has since moved on. Word is that they are selling or renting Section 8 people in there now. They're denying it. But he told me of two people who are there at $1,000 a month, and they're under Section 8 being paid by the government. I just thought you might want to be interested in that. Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on. One more?
I just wanted to say, I'm a resident also, and I've been here for 10 years. And when we turn in a complaint to the office, they tell us one thing and they lie. They totally lie. My sewer, my sewer's backed up ever since February the 11th. Not backed up totally, but backed up. My neighbor next door couldn't stay there because his totally backed up, and they finally got to it, but they lied to him for five straight days, five straight days. And my complaint is, is that when you talk to him or my wife talks to him, they don't answer. They lie to us. They totally lie to us. But they want the payment by the 5th of every month. I was one that signed the lease, which I didn't want to, but I signed it. And I think it's totally wrong. And for Morton being the way it is, one day, I lived in the South End of Peoria for 55 years, and that's what it's coming to there, gentlemen. I'm sorry, but I hope not. I pray not. Thank you.
Well, I mean, everybody moves out of there. There are those taxes. People are going to move out of there. They're not going to stay there. I mean, come on, let's get real. If you Google this company, find out what they've done and how many times they've been sued. They've just lost, I think, $4 million. Just Google it. So if you don't do nothing about it, thanks.
Can I say one more thing? I did a little research on this company. For $2,000, they will fly you out to Colorado for a three-day seminar on how to make 15% to 40% profit on your investment by taking over mobile home parks. Now, this place has over 240 nationwide they own, and they come in here, and it's like their, their first rodeo. They're, they're ignoring everything to do with rationale, lawfully, how to conduct reasonably, and doing whatever they want. They passed a water bill to a 77-year-old woman who lives alone. They passed, brought it on to her in this last rent due, and charged her for 7,000 gallons of water being used in one month. These people are just doing what they want. I understand your stand, it's a private property. You've heard that everywhere. We can't do nothing. It's private property. Maybe the best answer is, is who can we go to? Who will listen? Who, who? I'm sure we've heard someone, already state attorney, whatever. But there's got to be someone that turns to to say, hey, let's take a look at this. And just law-wise, they're, they're doing whatever they want instead of, and saying, well, you're just going to have to deliver it or we're going to kick you out. And people are being scared, the older, we have a lot of elderly there. They're worried that they're going to be evicted if they don't sign the lease, if they don't pay this, if they don't pay that. And the law, as we look it up for all these issues, the one main thing is, we, the contract I signed is a renewable contract. It gave me free water, free garbage, free sewer. Okay? They're saying, no, they can change that now. It's right in the kind, it's a, this is going to end up a five- to 10-year nightmare in the court, you know, in the courts to get all these different answers. But I just don't believe, when I moved down here and saw that park, there is no other park anywhere around here. I've, I've checked out 10 of them, all the way up to Germantown, all the way out to Galesburg, and there, there was nothing as nice-looking as this place was and well-kept and big. And yet, they're not doing anything. I've got a sewer on my corner lot that if I don't go out and rake the leaves off when it's pouring, it becomes a river for a block and a half in each direction, literally a river across the whole street and up under the park and up under my property, because that's the only functioning sewer drainage. This is outside water sewer, not house sewer. The one across the street's plugged, two of them down the line plugged. Well, in the summertime, I will take you and show you the mosquitoes that are, that are basking in these things. You can see the larvae and everything. Wouldn't that, that stuff stand there for a while? That's a health concern. We've got main entrance lights that went out over 12 weeks ago. One went out, three weeks later, the other one, off of Jefferson, our two main entrances. I went to them, I said, what are you going to do about that? Well, we sent out our guys. It's not the bulbs, so we're going to refer to Amren. So four weeks later, well, Amren, I've seen them in and out every week there. Well, they said it's the electrical power line to that, and now we're waiting for another subcontract. It's just a runaround they give you. And that's a safety issue. That corner entrance, you, if you don't know where you're going, you'll go right past it. It's so dark at night, you know? So thank you.
No, Craig has been working hard with the health department and contacting everybody you can, but our hands are tied, and it is private property and the water.
Are there, you're...
We have.
You make...
I don't know.
We, the village has, as I mentioned in my statement, the village has interceded with state regulators in an attempt to magnify your voice. The bulletin we're sending to you is intended to give you information on who you need to contact about complaints of specific parts of your property.
So just rattle their ears all the time, is what all, all these different things. You're going to direct us to the people who can do something about it, is what...
That's correct, and I would encourage you to make your voice known en masse. Sometimes when you deal with state regulatory agencies, they, they may not have time to deal with one complaint, but if they hear a lot of complaints very frequently, that's sometimes what it takes to, to instill action. But a number of the issues you, that have been specifically expressed tonight are IDPH issues. Spacing around mobile homes, roads, parking trailers on the roads, regulation roadway issues, IDPH. But the bulletin we're mailing to each of you will have more information on specifically who to contact, phone numbers for local offices, and is intended to aid you in getting in touch with the appropriate agencies who you need to contact who have regulatory authority to intercede on your behalf.
And is that also the same reason why, they went in under my, without my permission, just destroyed, I took pictures, of my line, heater, my, my, I called the police just to make a report, but she says, I'm sorry. It's the same excuse. This is private property. We can't do anything about that. Now, this is just one. I talked to another neighbor, said they talked to a police, another police person, they said, I don't get a direct answer on why. It seems like the fact it's private property is in a little realm all its own out here, not only with law. She says, well, all you can do is take them to small claims court. I can't afford to take people to small claims court. I mean, you came under there and destroyed everything, and now you're going to tell me to turn around? Well, here's a good one. We're going to put in a new water line, we're going to put, put a new insulation, new heat tape, all for free. Except what they failed to mention was the, the first illegal water meters they put in that are not even made for commercial use, that cannot be read by the satellites, that they brought in some, excuse me, idiots, the kids that they just hired off the streets. Because I could tell by the work they did. I was in the service industry for many years up in Chicago. They come in, do all this, and, but then they, they don't tell you, well, we're going to, the fact of the matter is, is they were told, from my understanding, that, again, the pipe was half inch, it has to be now 3/4 inch for that water pipe coming in to be up to code. But they said nothing about, oh, and we're going to replace the meters that were put in wrong with another meter now. When they put in my meter, it leaked so bad, I had water all over. Everything got drenched. My heater didn't work. I understand it's nothing you can do something about. But there's got to be somebody that will listen, because if this keeps going, that place is going to become a dump.
Well, we tried to get you accurate numbers. Craig has been working hard on that. We worked with our lawyer to make sure we could get you. So anybody wanted to contact them, it'd be mass people, and the more that could do it. So I would have to read math.
I just wonder...
We weren't trying to just give it to the president or, or board. We wanted to just give it to everybody.
Thank you for that. I did see, I did see the letter that you're, you're going to be mailing out. My, my husband is retired Army, and he's a vet, and so we have an attorney through Prairie State by a State of Illinois grant for veterans and their spouses. And he is reaching out. I know he's talked to some of you here, Bart Wollek, and he's trying to handle some of this for us, but we're only one, and, and there are a lot of people here. And I, there's a lot of frustration. We thank you for your time. I think the biggest thing is, we don't know where to go next, how to get help. There's laws on the books. There is an act, and Mr. McGrath, I'm sure you're familiar with it, that protects mobile homeowners. And those laws are being broken, and I don't, we don't know what the answers are. We know we're in a situation where our health is affected, our safety is affected, and we're being told, sorry, it's personal property. There's nothing we can do. So that's why everyone is so frustrated. And I can give you an example. Last summer, a neighbor across the street is an alcoholic and a drunk. For whatever reason, he was fixated on my husband. He came across the street in a drunken anger, tried to break our door down to get into our house to get at my husband. I called the police. The officer that came took the report, said, sorry, nothing he could do. He could go talk to him, but it's private property. So what? We can, we can be vandalized? We can be threatened? We can be abused? And the police can't even help us? That's, that's where a lot of our, we feel like we're an island unto ourself, and, and there's nothing we can do. This is a huge $555 million corporation, and we're a small community trying to stand up and fight for our protection and our rights. So that's why we're here tonight. We hoped you would have some answers for us, to be able to refer us somewhere.
One, one place that you can go, it's not, it's not going to solve the issue or, but if you all make your voice on the Better Business Bureau, I don't know if you guys have made complaints.
We haven't tried that.
Okay. It's, you're, you're not going to, none of this is going to be fixed. However, don't have one person do it. Have everyone individually fill it out. You probably should organize a little bit and teach. It, it's not hard to figure out. I just looked it up. It'll kind of give you a step-by-step how to file a complaint.
Okay.
That actually goes in the rating. Now, it, it's a little bit of a catch-22 because you do want new residents coming in also to help.
Yes, we do.
Right, so, so that's one of those things, but it can be updated, and it's something that you can hold over their head, because that, that goes out to everybody. It's public information. It can be seen, and as long as it's factually based, as long as it's, you know, organized, well-done, that can actually be very effective. can actually be very effective. And I'm not sure exactly how, you know, apartment complexes or, or something like this could actually be, could be filed, but, but I'm sure it could. You know, whether they're a member or not doesn't matter, but it's a place that, that might get a little bit of traction as far as activity too as well. That's just an idea.
Thank you. We had not, we had not considered that at all. Thank you, gentlemen, for your time.
One more time?
Yes. Yeah, our biggest problem is just our basic fundamental rights of invasion of privacy. It's under the Fourth Amendment and it's under the US Constitution and I believe it's under the, the Illinois Constitution. And who's protecting our rights of them invading our property? That's a really questionable, the, the law says that, well, we got to take it to court. So every time somebody breaks into our home, we got to wait, ah, let's go to court first. It's too late then. And I believe there's a section in the Illinois statute under mobile home parks that says that you, you guys could have jurisdiction in the area. There's actual the mobile, Illinois Department of Public Health and paragraph two says, under the jurisdiction of where the property is at. So maybe that's something, you know, check out.
Thank you, God bless you all. Thank you.
Thank you, supervisor.
Morton Chamber of Commerce. Kurt, we will get to you. Sorry. We will.
Good evening, everyone. Leanne Brown, Executive Director of the Morton Chamber of Commerce. And tonight, as it says on the agenda, I want to give some updates and additional background on the, what is noted there as a pocket park. And this is at the corner of First and Jefferson downtown, catty corner from the Community Foundation, catty corner from PNC Bank. Currently, the space has two, maybe a little tired looking benches and a round planter and a lot of improvements have happened around that space. And we wanted to bring forth a potential project for that corner. So to give you a little background, this is a project out of our Chamber Beautification Committee. And, you know, just to give a little information about the pocket park, it's not in a sense of what a, a park district space would be. That is a placemaking term now that a lot of redevelopment, small areas, public spaces in a, in a downtown district or throughout a community, they throw out the term of, of a pocket park. So that's why we are referencing it as a pocket park. But it is a placemaking, a way to attract and engage and allow people to have a experience area. This is a Chamber Beautification Subcommittee. We've had Keach Architect, Jeff Keach, Nate Parrott, Joel Dickerson, Park Director, Bill Operley, Brad Marks, and Farnsworth, a couple of different representatives, be a part of this team to really dive in to this project and, and help us define what it can be. So just wanted to give a little history to why this project and why the Chamber Beautification Committee. And as we shared, a lot of this with several groups and individuals that we met with. This ties into the comprehensive plan that the village has for future development and focusing on our continued enhancement of our community. And from that comprehensive plan, the business district, so the business district redevelopment plan was created, that was established in 2010, is a 23-year program. And out of this, it outlines in the plan where and how you must and should spend these funds out of this. And a couple areas of that are on beautification and streetscape projects and use of incentives to attract and encourage development and redevelopment efforts. So there's many other areas, but those are definitely two points that are important to the Chamber Beautification Committee and others. And why the downtown redevelopment study that was adopted by the village in 2011, the Chamber Beautification Committee has utilized this plan and continued several projects throughout the downtown specifically because of this project. Also, the welcome to Morton signs and then the downtown flowerpots, to name a couple recent projects. So what is the impact of these? It definitely is a, a business driver. You know, quality of life for our existing businesses is, is needed. As our businesses are attracting employees, this is top of the list of conversation when they're recruiting employees to come to work for them, of what is the quality of life? What is available to me in the Morton community? And spaces like this and walkability, bikeability, and unique spaces for them to enjoy and engage with the community is a high level priority. It's also important to, you know, just recent conversations with Morton Buildings owner, John Russell, of, he's lived many different locations and he even speaks to how important and how a thriving downtown and how much he appreciates our, our town, downtown district. It's certainly a business driver for our downtown businesses. Anytime you have another place attracting people, allowing people to depause and, and enjoy, definitely gives them another reason to come, come to our downtown and, and stay a little bit longer. Couple other points, this ties into our walking tour map that the trustees have seen in the downtown area. There's about a half a mile walk that includes the Memorial Plaza, walk over to Jefferson School, across the street to, we'll call it Church Square, up to Community Foundation, this new corner, on up the street to the old Town Crier, the Village Bell, and then up to the library with their reading garden, garden and the sculpture. So the goal is to build out that space and allow additional sites to come on board and keep expanding that walk throughout the entire community. Other spaces underway are the new playground at Jefferson School and then the park district will be focusing on Horseshoe Park. So it's very important to create spaces like this just to really attract, like I said, that walkability and bikeability. So before you, on the screen, we want to finally publicly share this draft conceptual rendering. This is after several versions, to have a site plan to begin capturing the scope of project and cost. So this is by no means the final plan, as we've shared with all the trustees in our meetings, the business district and others, don't get caught up on, I don't like that shrub or plant or the line design and the, the lamp pole, those details are to be finalized. But we needed to get to a certain point so we could have a site plan and scope of project to begin defining cost. The committee used this conceptual plan to meet with the village to make sure we had final approval for constructing over utilities. And the village has approved this site plan in relation to utilities and other infrastructure requirements. We have presented this project and its many different versions to the Business District Commission throughout the way. And as I mentioned, we sat down with each of the village trustees, so thank you again for your time to share the details of the project. We continue to discuss options for low and less maintenance options, even plants that mimic turf grass, the drinking fountain has a non-freeze component and other low maintenance plantings. So a few updates to add to this. We have a potential modified design change where you see the back walls where the Morton sign is behind the pumpkin and then the bottom right rendering, which is our storyboard historical wall. We are looking at sections of those walls, may not be all the walls, to incorporate stone slab. So if you think to the Morton, welcome to Morton signs, the stone slabs to mimic that design and install stone slabs instead of a structure, a wall structure. And so that has reduced cost, ties into the welcome to Morton sign and a lot less maintenance. So that is one change. One other feature that we want to share, the pumpkin will not look like the pumpkin in the picture. So Roger, if you can go to the next slide there. We have a design concept for a mosaic pumpkin. And if you didn't know, we are the pumpkin capital of the world, so we wanted to celebrate that in this space and mimic a 500 pound pumpkin, roughly four and a half by six feet. And like I said, to really celebrate that we are the pumpkin capital of the world, this is right where our festival pumpkin weigh-off takes place and has for many, many years. Obviously to celebrate and honor our ag and farm industry and of course, that we have our Libby's plant operating here. The material and process, just to give you a little idea of this, the inside of this would be a stainless steel structure that would have several layers of the mesh and concrete and then epoxy that then the tiles would be applied to. There would be three different shades of orange and then a, a green stem constructed out of tile. This project will estimate around $42,000 for that pumpkin. So this is a sample rendering of another pumpkin that exists in the, the US that we just wanted to give at least a visual of more than the stock image of a pumpkin in the previous one. So the Business District Commission has approved this project. That is one of the funding sources that we wanted to capture for this potential project. So the Business District Commission has approved $150,000 to be allocated towards this project. And just wanted to share a few details of some other funding sources and partners before wrapping up this overview of the project. So the goal with this, to have these projects look like they were just installed 50 plus years from now. And so with that, we always talk about the, the maintenance. And having maintenance and keeping spaces like this fresh for many, many years, a lot of times, of course, cost is associated with that. So we are working with the Community Foundation to launch a new endowment fund, working with Scott Witzick, already drafting some language for this fund for a beautification, maintenance for public spaces. We already received our first funding source of $1,500 from a Walmart grant. This is likely a reoccurring every year grant. They do another fund to our festival endowment, Give Back Fund, and then they are very much on board of supporting this new endowment. So this year, they've allocated the $1,500 already approved. Also, our Morton Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors pre-approved our festival Give Back project for 2019 of this park. And that will be up to $25,000. Of that 20,000 would go to this, the foundation, the construction, and then 5,000 would go to that new maintenance endowment fund that would be available for public entities such as the village, the school, the park and the library. Also, the Witzick Family Beautification Endowment Fund, we receive dollars from that each year, the Chamber of Commerce does, to be directly supporting a downtown beautification project. So at the end of this year, we'll have $2,500 for the project from that endowment fund and that continues to grow and we receive funds every year from that as well. We've shared this project with a few other business entities to kind of plant the seed of a potential upcoming project. And we look forward to receiving confirmation from the Business District Fund so we can circle back to them to let them know how realistic the project is and to begin the funding. So the project is a, a two-year project. We would anticipate starting construction spring of next year for a install prior to Festival 2021. And construction will not begin until funding is fully obtained. So the next step would be to work closely with the village, finalize our site plan and in conjunction, go after the rest of the private funds. Once we receive the total project, which we are at, which is less than when we met, we are at an overall cost now of $232,000 instead of our previous $250. As you can see, we have a lot of moving parts. When you go out for bid on that, hopefully the dollar amount would even be less, but that's where we're at, at this point, $232,000. That includes the entire site rendering that you see along with the mosaic pumpkin. So it includes all of those features. Business District approval of the $150,000. I, I'm here to share, we ask that we receive a minimum of $100,000 from the Business District Fund with contingency of going, tapping into that additional $50,000 as we are working directly with the village. Any overage of that $100,000 would come back to the board for details and additional approval from you. So the next step would be to, you know, work directly with the village, prepare the site for construction bids, finalize all of the funds for the entire project so we can tap into those when we receive the construction bids back. And then at that time, if we need to exceed that $100,000, not to exceed that $150 from Business District, we would come back before you to, to share why, the details and ask for any additional funding if that's even needed. Any questions?
All right, thank you.
Yeah, Kim.
So you would have to raise $132,000 before you proceeded with this project?
Correct.
So I guess we would have that money in, well, not in hand, but committed?
Yes, you guys would, the entire project would have that money committed, report back to you and then we would know that we could proceed forward with finalizing the site plan and, and begin to prepare the construction bids.
$20,000 is already raised, right?
Yeah, $20,000 from the Chamber and $2,500 from the Witzick Foundation. And then we have other conversations, but we need to circle back once we know approval from the Business District Funds.
So what would you anticipate the need for the additional $50,000 from the Business District?
You know, with anything, it's a moving target. We tried to get as far as we could with the site plan, but we have many components that we still need to circle back to. And, you know, is there any other design changes we need to make or when the construction bids come back, hopefully they're a lot lower, they could be higher and at that time it would give us an opportunity to review those. And do we need whatever the higher dollar amount comes back? Do we need that? Or are there any other opportunities for us to scale back to keep it at that $232,000?
We aren't, are we having the farmer statue?
Yeah, so a separate project that is all private funding is a bronze sculpture of a male adult farmer. It will depict a adult male farmer. And that is a completely private funded project that would be installed after everything else is installed. So that's a separate project. But yes, good to bring up.
The mosaic pumpkin?
Uh huh.
Is that just, I mean, it's, I thought, I, I thought I was in the impression that these tiles were going to be engraved or something. Did I, did I?
No, we're not, we talked about allowing people to sponsor tiles if, if that makes sense.
Okay, so.
We do not plan on engraving them, as you can imagine, that would become very busy.
Yeah.
So.
But, but you're going to try to raise funds by having people sponsor a tile on this?
Potentially is one funding aspect. Our initial will be to reach out to several key potential players to see what their level of investment desire would be. to see what their level of investment desire would be.
You know, I don't want to be negative about this, but a $42,000 pumpkin, I think, could be the talk of this community. I mean, I'm sorry, I just, I just can't appreciate a $42,000 pumpkin. I just, I just have a problem with that. Enough said.
Question, Leanne.
Yeah.
On the, the timing of the fundraising for this. You'd mentioned with the funds committed, are the funds in hand before we'd start?
Yeah, we would want the, the funds in hand in so-called terms of in the bank account, ready to be accessed.
I mean, I just.
Julie and Craig have had some conversation that the funds have to be in hand. It'll be ran similar to the plaza. So I'm anticipating we'll have a resolution in the next meeting. All of you can go over, be handled similar to the plaza where at that time, we probably have one more meeting with different parties to go to the, you know, of what the goals were. And then from there, Craig Laudermel and Farnsworth would handle all the details similar to the plaza. And they'll go through what can be done, what can be put in, and come back with something.
That'll work on something for us to consider at our next meeting for resolution, okay.
So then part of that'll be the money in hand. And then if you agree to that, then we would have Craig and Farnsworth and the Business District and different ones, probably Business District, a couple trustees. And Leanne, have one meeting, and then after that, Craig and Farnsworth would design it, get it to the proper area, come back to the board. That's where the plaza was handled. But except this time, they want the money in hand because we had some issues there on the last time. It just makes it simpler. Plus, we do have expenses at the plaza, so we need that funding mechanism to maintain it.
And that's why we're excited about the new endowment fund, that we can release to public entities such as the village for those spaces. I think that's an important opportunity.
So we'll get that resolution to you, all of you to look over. In the next meeting, we'll talk about it again. And the $42,000 pumpkin. Okay, any other questions?
And then two other dates, just to put them out there while I can. Monday, April 22nd is Earth Day. We are going to host a community cleanup. So more information will be released on this of how citizens, students, youth, businesses can participate in a community cleanup day. And then Saturday, April 6th, is Morton Day at the Riverfront Museum. So there is, it's free access, so there's no charge. You are a member, member for the day, and you can enjoy the Riverfront Museum for Morton's Day on Saturday, April 6th. So information's out there, and we'll continue to share that. But hopefully, families and others can enjoy the museum. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other public comments? Consent agenda denied at the approval of the minutes. The rigor meeting, March 4th, 2018, and the approval of the bills. Could we have a motion?
So moved.
Any comments? Call the roll.
Belsley.
Yes.
Looneye.
Yes.
Pear.
Yes.
Lehman.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrot.
Yes.
Motion passed.
And as we're trying to set the record tonight on the longest meeting, we have Kurt Bya, Bya Labraski with Hanson Engineering to discuss this resolution, 1919, resolution of the grant to procure and administer the automated driving system demonstration grant here in the Peoria and Morton area. Kurt?
Well, thanks, Mr. Mayor, and thanks to the village board for having us, for having me here tonight to speak about this. I just want to kind of give you guys a high-level overview of what, what this is and what it's going to, or what it will hopefully do, and then take any questions that you may have. So the, there's a bit of a, I guess, spirit for innovation and in the autonomous driving field here in not just Morton, but in the greater Peoria area. And throughout that, you know, with that spirit and with that initiative, the region has decided, or some regional units of government and corporations have decided to, to apply for autonomous driving systems grant from the U.S. Federal Department of Transportation. That grant is intended for, to provide the U.S. DOT with information to set rules and regulations and determine appropriate levels of safety associated for the commercial deployment of autonomous vehicles in the future. The, I, I'm here tonight because I was hired by Peoria County, by the, by the Peoria County Government to come, to basically put together a strategy and a team and partnerships, both public and private, to win the grant. And part of that strategy involves coming to folks like you guys, coming, going to the, the MPO, Tri-County Regional Planning Commission. They'll actually be the main applicant because it's such a regional effort. We've already talked to Tazewell County. Peoria County, I believe, was having, is discussing it tonight as well at their meeting. The city of Peoria has been considering participation. Peoria CEO Council will be participating in the grant, in the local share, as well as, I believe, Hanson Professional Services, my company is considering it. And then tomorrow, I have a meeting at State Farm Insurance over in Bloomington to, to see if they're interested. They are actually pretty interested. The grant is due, the application is due by 8:00 PM on March 21st. And, and really, the, this 10 million, it's basically, we're going to apply for somewhere in the neighborhood of $8 million and try to raise about $1.6 million of both local government and private entity dollars. Those, those funds will be mostly paid to a Morton Corporation, who's an autonomous stuff, who's a world, global leader in this industry, in this field. So to basically, they, at first, they will own, operate, and maintain the six cars that will be driving four different routes to and fro, to, from Morton to Peoria. Then they'll be providing service to the South Side Office of Concerned Apartment Buildings and Group Homes from, from their doors to the, to the Transit Center, and then from the Transit Center to grocery stores and home, home goods stores in East Peoria in the Lovey District. So that, we're going to be doing that for 400 days over the course of two years, collecting lots of data to, and analyzing that data for both what infrastructure, meaning roads or traffic signal, equipment, or what's needed for these autonomous vehicles, but also to then turn over the information and help the U.S. DOT analyze it in a way that provides performance indicators for, for what, what thresholds and rules, and then these rules and regulations should be met. So with that, that's kind of an overview of what we're going to be up to and what we're going to do. And actually, one of the other routes that'll be provided will be from off-site OSF parking to, to the OSF Medical Center. So that's just another application that we're going to use. So I'll take any questions, and you know, however far in the weeds you guys want to get, you know, we can, we can discuss and spend a little time on it. I know it's a large, it's a substantial commitment that, that the group is asking from.
Maybe you could mention a couple of things, Kurt. How many, we talked once about how many million dollars worth of cars anticipated in 10 years?
Yeah, so.
And how much business that's.
Yeah, so that's, that's really, what, what's, the intent of the grant is to create an open-source platform ecosystem where companies from all over the world can come in and basically test out autonomous, how autonomous driving systems change their business models. And whether they're startups or State Farm, frankly, they can, they can come in and use this system to do that. Some economic projections provided by Next Mobi, a not-for-profit, that after the grant application is over, will, will own and operate the system and market it. They believe that it's worth approximately $500 million in economic impact to the Peoria region and, which equates to about 800 STEM jobs at an average salary of somewhere between $130,000 to $150,000 for those 800 jobs. So that is, and that's over the course of 10 years. So that's a, that's a pretty substantial opportunity that we have here. And we figured that it, it's a, it's a good way to, that this government grant, this U.S. DOT grant's a good way to kind of seed that, that initiative and leverage it for the future.
So the, the grant, from what I understand, is it's 600 million, right, that they're actually giving out?
No, they're, they're giving out $60 million.
Sixty million is what I meant to say, yeah. So the, the point of asking for the eight is that knowing that your one place obviously isn't going to get the whole.
There's some requirements, or some limitations, I guess I should say, from the, that have been put forth in the Notice of Award or Notice of Opportunity for Funding from the U.S. DOT. The first one is, is that no state can receive more than $15 million and, and of the 60, and then no project can receive more than 10. We're asking, we're only asking for eight for a couple of different reasons. One, while the, the Notice of Opportunity show, or states that there's no requirement for matching funds, we believe we'll be more competitive if we did have both public and private matching funds to do that. And we're trying to, so we're trying to meet a certain requirement. So we designed everything with that intent.
So do they, in the, and I got a chance to read through the grant a little bit. Do the open source is a big deal, right, versus your Google, your Alphabet Company, a couple other of the big players, Tesla? It's all proprietary, the big players in it, as far as the research and development right now, right?
Correct.
And so from, from that standpoint, do they, do they talk about, does that give us a competitive advantage as far as the grant goes, as far as opening it up to other com, you know? The information is free, I guess?
Um, so the.
More easily accessed.
The information is much easier access. What the open-source platform actually does more than anything is that it provides a, the ability for autonomous stuff to create vehicles using software that's what you would, like, think of like out-of-the-box type software, meaning you can go, and it's a place to start, which is a huge deal because that's the cost and the amount of time it takes to, to code the artificial intelligence and, and build or, or put together a computer that, that is needed to run this. So the open-source platform, what it does is it brings in AutoWare software. That's, I believe, a Japanese product. You, don't quote me on that, but I'm pretty sure. And then Karma, which is a software being developed by the Federal Highway Administration to do these things. And so what we're going to do is test and prove how that'll work and then how connectivity in the system improves the, the artificial intelligence learning and the localization for these vehicles.
That's the V2V part of it, right?
Correct.
And then the V2I is a whole, is that addressed in this then, obviously, when you're trying to set the roads and?
Yeah, so for V2I, what we'll do is we'll run tests both with and without the communication piece. So some traffic signals will be, will have RSUs on them that'll broadcast traffic signal timings instead of the information, or instead of the sensors on the vehicle being required to sense whether it's red, yellow, or green just by pictures that it takes in through its eyes, for lack of a better term. So, so the, we'll broadcast that on like six traffic signals that are city, city of Peoria owned in the, around the Jefferson Avenue area. Some other V2I applications involve construction zones. Because of projects actually that I'm working on as well, the Murray Baker Bridge will be closed in 2020, so there'll be some construction staging and detouring congestion that's going to be occurring on our routes associated with this. So we're going to, again, put these, these roadside units along, or within the construction zones and then in other strategic locations to improve all that, all that talking and that information.
And I'll, I'll get you the information afterwards. There's another company that's local that is very interested in the autonomous mobility, but it's in material handling. He's very, very well researching the robotics and can probably help you guys. I know it's, I don't want to hold up the 321. I mean, it's tight to get all this, there's going to be some late nights and getting all this stuff.
I may not sleep tonight.
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to hold that up anymore. But he's somebody that you, you guys want to get involved with, and he can actually help on the backside to get you that, maybe help with the other funding and stuff.
Well, and that's really, so the, I, I kind of joke when I give some of these talks and presentations on this, that there's really the, the grant application, which is the now ask. And then there's the, the Next Mobi future side of this. And so we've already had some companies from, actually, random parts across the country, reach out to, to us when they've heard about what's happening or what we're proposing to do, to say like, hey, I could come in and test my, I would want to come in and test my, my idea or my, my widget, my gadget on the system. How do I do that? And can I be a part of your grant application team? Or like, you know, we need to pump the brakes a little bit on the grant application team. They can still do it within that three-year timeframe. But it's, as far as being like a corporate sponsor or part of the team, that ship's kind of sailed just because of the amount of information that's required to turn over to the U.S. DOT.
Can you shed any? Go ahead.
The 25,000 for the three years, is that, I assume that that's just a tiny part of the 1.6?
Yeah, we're, we're, we're working through an effort to raise 1.6 million dollars is our goal of public and private dollars. So right now, the, the, I don't have anything other than the CEO Councils on the private side in writing yet. Corporations, as you guys are probably aware, they move a little bit, they, they wait a little bit to the last minute. So we're still working on, on those, other than the CEO Council, that is private dollars. We do have, as far as the public agencies go, the Peoria, Pekin, urbanized area, they're going to, they're going to, they put forth $100,000 a year for those three, same three years of state planning dollars. Then Peoria County is, I, hopefully approves either tonight or tomorrow night, the, another $100,000 a year over, or each year for three years. The city is looking at, is the same, the city of Peoria is the same. Tazewell County is at $50,000, and the village is at 25.
Is that, are you, are you looking to get all of that committed before that 21st?
Yeah, so one of the evaluation criteria is risk. So we, that's why we're here tonight. And honestly, this came out in probably mid to late January. I was hired sometime in late January to begin just putting together the strategy. Folks thought like, hey, this seems like something that's kind of going on in the region anyway. Maybe we should apply, but there's a lot of things that need to be, a lot of strategy before you even write it, you know, and to, to deal with that. So, so it all needs to be committed. Otherwise, it would be a risk to the application, and then that would be a detriment to, to the success.
As I understand this, the, the 25,000 is, if we don't get the grant, then we're, we're still not paying you 25,000?
That, that's correct.
Not committing that if we don't get the grant.
That's correct. And I think, I think the whole cost is actually going to end up being, I just got numbers roughly from autonomous stuff, actually, tonight, and I was working at Eli's beforehand here, typing some stuff up. I think that there, it's going to be about $9.8 million is going to be the total project cost. Autonomous stuff is, they are, within that, they are actually giving us about a $500,000 discount on what the actual cost of this is because they see the long-term benefit for not just themselves, but the region. And as good corporate citizens, you know, they're, they're making that commitment as well.
With a $15 million limit per state, correct? And our request is going to be for eight?
About eight, eight-two, eight-three, yeah.
I'm just curious, can you shed any light on how we stack up against competition out there?
In the, in the state? I know there's two other projects being considered. One of them is a really large project that's fairly research-oriented, which isn't, which is not the stated intent of this grant. It'll be, it's a U of I project that'll be based out of the Rand Tool Transportation Center. That ran, the, the idea being that they'll convert I-57 from, I believe, Mount Vernon to Moni into a freight autonomous driving corridor to test how platooning and other freight movements and applications can be affected by autonomous driving. So that's the largest one. I think that overall project cost is somewhere in the 40 to 50 million dollar range. So they're, they're surely asking for a full boat. I would imagine, I don't know where they're going to get the other, the other dollars. We're not involved in that grant application. There's another small, smallish project on the west side of Chicago where they're just going to be providing some free rides, just like we are, for folks in collecting data and, and other. where they're just going to be providing some free rides, just like we are, for folks in collecting data and other things. Those, that project, I'm not sure who's supporting that. I know that at the Illinois Department of Transportation level, that their research group is going to support the autonomous, or the U of I project and their actual autonomous driving, or autonomous vehicle group, their management group is going to support our application. So they've kind of split it for political reasons, and we're still discussing with the governor whether or not he will, which if he'll support all projects or just ours. Additionally, we've received, well, we've received letters of support from all state senators and representatives that are, you know, within our footprint, as well as the U.S. federal representatives and both senators.
Okay, any other? All right, thank you, Kurt, appreciate it. Sorry about the long wait.
No worries.
So could we have a motion on that resolution?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any other questions? Call the roll.
Herr.
Yes.
Lehman. Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Blounier.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Village Clerk?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
You're welcome. I was talking to Kurt. Village Administrator?
I have a couple items tonight, Your Honor. The first of which is a recommendation from the Morton Tourism Grant Committee for a tourism grant for the Bradley University Women's Soccer Tournament. This application normally is processed with the normal fall grant round. They had some change in, like, staffing, I think they're all volunteers, but, so it kind of fell through the cracks for them. So they asked me if they could submit an application. This grant, this tournament usually brings in about 90 hotel room stays, so we thought it was really important to continue offering this grant to them. So it was scored by the committee, and they recommended 100% of their request, or $3,000.
Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any other comments? Call the roll.
Lehman.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Yes.
Blounier.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
The next item I have is Resolution 20-19, which is a resolution approving grant to the Peoria Area Convention and Visitors Bureau for Great Lakes National Championship Softball Tournament.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments? Anything you want to add?
I sent an email out about this. Basically, this is, pays the fee for the recruiter to bring the event to town. They're anticipating 643 hotel rooms per night for this tournament. I assume this, it's going to be, main campus will be the Louisville Slugger Complex, but I'm assuming that they will have to be hosting games just about everywhere in the Peoria area to get that many ballgames in for a week. They anticipate the 643 total, as I said, 84 of those rooms that have been blocked are in Morton Hotels, which gives us 13%. So they're asking for a $4,095 commitment from us, so that is our 13% of the overall fee of, I believe it's $31,500 or something along that line. That, I, backing into what we get in hotel revenue, of all, 84 rooms were blocked at an X-dollar amount. It appears to me that we should split this at 70, how do I end up being? A certain percentage will be, the majority of it will come out of the tourism tax. The rest of it I see coming out of the general fund, as it will be more of a payback in sales tax and motor fuel tax, and that type of revenues coming back to us from the people being in town, shopping and buying gas and doing all that type of thing.
I think we had 73% tourism, 27% general fund, right?
Did I read something in that email that if those rooms were not utilized, that there would be a reduction in the...
Correct. We pay our share depending on the total rooms and the rooms that are blocked in Morton.
So is that 80, 83 rooms for X number of nights, or just 83 rooms?
It's 84 rooms per night, is my understanding.
And it's actually an extensive tournament. It's like a five-day tournament, so it's not just a weekend event. It's actually, they're coming in town on Monday, as I understand, and concludes on Saturday.
Actually, 500 nights?
Right.
Or 500 rooms?
And it works that these rooms would have to be blocked through the Peoria Area Convention and Visitors Bureau booking system, so we will know exactly how many rooms were utilized, rather than being an estimate as we've had in the past. This is something we're looking to do more of down the road, and I'll probably be bringing back more on that in the future.
We're going to try to fill up our vacant rooms and block and bring that?
Just in that quick number, it's more than $100 a night, but even at 100, at 500, that's 50,000. So if you figure what the, I mean...
And we get 6%?
Yeah, so I mean, you're already...
And the way the resolution is written, Pat is protecting us, there's a clause in there that in the event, the event goes away, we get reimbursed for that, so we're not out anything if it doesn't happen.
Any other comments? Call the roll.
Newman.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Blounier.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Lehman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
And the last item I have tonight is actually for Mr. Lautermilk. It's an acceptance of bids for water distribution materials from Corin, Maine of Washington, Illinois in the amount of $57,983.
Do we have a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Any comments? Call the roll.
Herr.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Blounier. Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
That's it.
Chief of Police?
I don't have anything this evening.
Correct answer. Corporation Council?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Director of Fire and Emergency Services?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Director of Public Works is in here, planning and zoning.
One item tonight for Craig, and that is the Spring Yard Cleanup Program. The dates are April 19th, or, I'm sorry, April 6th through April 28th, with three days that they're going to be closed, and it's the Friday of Good Friday, which is April 19th through Easter Sunday, April 21st. Same program as before, it's 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And I guess a couple reminders, the branches are not longer than five foot, four-inch diameter, and no root mass from shrubs or trees.
And we'll be posting that on the TV screen again.
And it's posted on the site as well.
All right, thank you. Village Trustees, anybody have anything?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
If not, can we have a motion to go home? Second?
Second.
All those in favor?